...tonight, so if you would please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and those in the audience, if you'd please stand and join us. We'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And well done. Counselors, before we begin tonight, I spoke with IT, and if you can keep your microphones out in front of you a little bit and keep them turned on at all times, it helps with the sound that we're trying to broadcast during tonight's meeting. So, thank you. Next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Also, city council pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body, respecting others and their viewpoints and finding solutions for the betterment of the city. With that, I would open up any citizen comments. Please state your name, your city of residence, and you'll have three minutes. And remember to speak up loudly and clearly into the microphones so those listening from home can hear what you have to say. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Dodd, Snodgrass, 2429 13th Avenue in Lewiston. So, we're one of the residents, my wife and I are, in the path of the reservoir failure. And so, out the gate, I want to tell you that the city response has been great. I empathize with what you're dealing with, the staff. You have friends of mine who work for the city. I understand what you're dealing with. My day job is helping cities deal with infrastructure issues, so I see that. But I want to come here to remind you, and you've probably been out and about and seen what happened, kind of give you the human face from my perspective of what happened. So, you had the 3 million gallons of water course down past the park. My neighbors across the street, their basement was flooded, and now CERPRO, they're out there pumping their basement out. Our house, we have a line of trees by the park, came through our property, tore out stairs, made, literally, it was like a laharr, a mud flow that was across the cul-de-sac. Went through our yard, we got two to six inches or more of very, very thick viscous mud, gravel, debris from the storage containers. So, that went through our yard. We have a daylight basement, so that might have protected some inflow problems that the neighbors experienced. From our house, it went on down. The neighbors below me, they suffered very serious impact, it flooded their basement. I see damaged items outside, drying. Went further down, crossed 11th Avenue, the house there by the culvert that blew out, they're in very, very bad shape. And through the culvert, and there's a home down on Sunset, you've seen those folks on TV, very, very bad situation. Our situation is bad, not as bad as the neighbors, okay? So, and we're all having to deal with this. So, people came to visit. Tim came by in the morning when it happened, and I got the number to file the claim, the damage claim. Followed up, I talked with, interacted with Nikki and Jean, completed the claim. And now, it's a process here, you're going to do some investigation, figure it out. I'm just pleading with you, don't forget about the people that were directly impacted by this damage. And don't, I don't want to see it put off because it is an insurance situation, and I want to work with the city. If you need advocacy to get the resources you need, I'll do that. But we all want to be made whole, okay? So, I just really, I feel for my neighbors because they had very, very serious impact. And I'm having contractors come by and we can, we'll get through it, but we want to be made whole, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dodd. Okay, are there further citizen comments tonight? Please introduce yourself for the record.
The mic's here.
Yep, we can hear you loud and clear.
This is Johanna, who said Frank, Lewiston, Idaho resident. We had a flood, my parents, my mom did, and it took months, months before the city, they got even a penny. And still, our basement, because of the city problem, that it still is not livable. And I want to let you know, now there's people that might have lost their driver's license, or maybe somebody was living in the basement, their ID. So homelessness, that's why people are homeless. Now, I'm going to talk just a second. I've been telling this city, do the cement work before the pavement? I want you guys to drive past 24th Street, but go east, but don't go the way that, you know, you go out to the dog pound, because you could get hit. And the owner, Little, on the corner on 24th Street, they want a stoplight there. So, I was on a bus, we got, almost got hit. It's very dangerous there. And you should see the cement side that has cement. This flood did, and the pavement looks good, that was before the flood. Now, look on the other side, the pavement was done first before the cement. So, just know, I gave some of you guys a song, and I want you guys to really help First Step for Life, okay? Volunteers would even drive 70 miles one way to help the warming center at Salvation Army, and the Salvation Army had files, so they couldn't do it this year. And the people that were working, they worked 12 hours, four hours, they didn't get paid. So, just think of the months. And, you know, you can give somebody on the street $1, but, you know, a lot of people that were against it, I feel you can get set up with, there's two motels, you can put money aside and give them a card and say, hey, this is my name, and put them up for three months. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Johanna. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Are there further citizen comments? Okay, I don't see any, thank you. Counselors, next up is item four, agenda item four. We need a motion to amend our agenda. Do you have a copy, you should have a copy of the...
Mr. Mayor.
Agenda item in your packet. Counselor Cleaver?
I'll make a motion to amend agenda. Do you want me to read the red or no?
Please.
Motion to amend the agenda to include item 7.E regarding resolution 2023-8, which was added to the agenda less than 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting.
Second. Then moved by Counselor Cleaver, excuse me, second by Counselor Towesley, to amend the agenda to include item 7E regarding resolution 2023-8, which was added to the agenda less than 48 hours prior to the start of this meeting. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I was just going to say, should we explain that it's an extension of the disaster emergency?
No, we'll get to it when we discuss it.
Oh, gotcha.
Just to add.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Thank you, Counselor Cleaver. Next up is item five, Roman number five, presentations, 5A, financial report, December 2022. Director Gordon here is here to present the report. Director Gordon, please remember to speak up loudly and clearly into the microphone. Introduce yourself for the record. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Amy Gordon, City President. And tonight, I'm presenting the December 2022 financial report, which is the three months of October through December 2022, and is the first quarter of our 2023 fiscal year. So, I always like to highlight areas within the financial report where we show we're tracking high on expenditures. We're 25% of the way through the year, but we have some of our expenditure lines that are tracking ahead of that 25%. They're typically routine, and, but I think for our citizens at home, it's important to provide the narrative as to why. And the general fund, our insurance trust, it's at almost 81% year-to-date of its budget. And that is just a result of our, all of our city's insurance policies being due at the beginning of the fiscal year, as opposed to payments throughout the fiscal year. Our workers' comp trust, again, that is a result of our premiums. We do, even though our workers' comp is self-funded, we do carry insurance to cover us in case we have any high claimants or high claims. So, we carry a policy on that, as well as a consulting contract. But if we were to back those items out, we're right on track for claim expenses. So, this year, we're doing pretty good on our claim expenses. And our information systems, our IT department, the, both the services and charges and the capital expenses are tracking high. And again, that's just a result of all of our software contracts. Most of them renew at the beginning of the fiscal year, and most of them require an annual payment. And then, our IT's capital is our PC replacement program, replacing computer equipment, and they'll stock that inventory and prepare for those replacements at the beginning of the fiscal year. And then, some of our areas, our capital expenses are tracking high. The water fund, and that is just the result of how we budgeted for the water treatment plant reconstruction. They had it budgeted to be about 90% complete at the year end, and we still had about 12 million of construction to do on the plant at the end of the fiscal year. So, that will be amended into the 23 budget. We'll just carry forward where we didn't get the progress through on the plant into the 23 budget. So, we started off with originally a $3.6 million budget, but we're going to have to get that up to the 12 million that's left on the plant construction, as well as the additional funding they got through the state ARPA funds to pay for the rest of that contract. Library, they are running high on their capital expenses, but that is related to the bookmobile and getting the rest of those grant dollars spent towards that bookmobile. That was 100% funded through the CARES Act, but it's just a timing of getting the bookmobile completely equipped with shelving and some other amenities that the vehicle required. General fund, there wasn't really anything out of the ordinary with general fund. I thought, though, we would highlight a couple of new areas that are showing on that report this year. One is the opioids, that was presented to you at the last meeting. They, and just this fiscal year, we've received 154,000 approximately of settlement fees. We had about 30,000 that was received last fiscal year. So, in that reserve account, we have about 180,000. You'll notice that there's no budget assigned to this program because we haven't figured out what we're going to do with that settlement. So, once we figure that out, we'll amend that into the budget, and you'll see that either in the 23 budget as an amendment, or in the 24 budget, we'll start probably trying to figure out how to utilize those funds and program it out. Then also, the golf course, that's equipment purchase that was approved a few months ago, a couple months ago. And we're going to start, you'll see us starting to build some golf course activities within the general fund now that we have a little bit more of an active stance in the running of the day-to-day operations, even through a professional contract, we'll be, have more oversight on that contract. So, we'll build those activities into the general fund so that we can share those resources, equipment, personnel. So, once we've kind of worked out that contract and how that will operate, we'll be putting before you in the budget amendments, the dollars for the golf course. And then, I just am highlighting the interest, because we are really fortunate to be in a really great interest market right now, and so, we've structured the city funds so that we're taking advantage of our reserves sitting in at the bank accounts that we're earning interest. With the funds that the city have, we want to make certain that we're taking advantage of that interest. So, we have, we're getting about $150,000 a month in interest revenue, which will take some pressure off the taxpayers, which is a good thing. And then, these are our fiduciary funds. I always want to keep you guys in the know on how these funds are performing, especially right now with the markets up and down. The police retirement fund, you'll see that that took a loss in December, but year-to-date, it is performing pretty well. The perpetual care, year-to-date, I just would remind council that that monthly revenue and the year-to-date revenue, they're the same. We only get the investment statements on that on a quarterly basis. So, December's revenues represent October, November, and December revenues, and so, again, we are doing really well on our investments for this year. And that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Counselors? Counselor Towesley?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that. You just said that because of our investments, we'd be able to take pressure off the taxpayers. And, you know, I just went through the, we just, those of us that are new, just went through the first budget cycle, so we're still kind of dazed and confused. So, explain how that will help the taxpayers. It means that we will be asking less of them?
That's a great question. So, even Bill, when we built the 23 budget, we pushed the interest revenue accounts up because rates were trending up, but we hadn't adjusted them, the rates ended up, they're better now than we projected in the budget. So, we're going to, our projected revenue will be higher than budget, which will help the reserves, and not just the general fund, but any fund that has reserves sitting in the bank, those will grow more than we had anticipated, which, when we're looking towards next year's budget, will have more reserves that we can lean on in building that budget out, and not have to potentially fill that with rate increases or property tax increases.
Thank you.
Director, you said, what was the interest amount for the quarter or for the month, you said?
It was approximate, we're about 150,000 a month that collectively, so throughout all of our funds at the city that we're earning interest on. And I did back out from that fiduciary funds, so I, those can be a little bit misleading because those are actually in the care of a professional investment advisor.
I do have a follow-up.
Counselor Towesley?
Thank you. You mentioned the water fund and that it would be a carryover, so that means that we wouldn't be asking for more, we would just be carrying over what we'd already allocated for the coming year to take care of?
That's correct.
What we still need to do?
The plant is, the construction of the plant's funded by the state revolving fund. So, when we built the 22 budget, we had planned, based on the budget, to be further along in the project. And so, when we were building the 23 budget, we budgeted less dollars, anticipating we'd be further along. And so, this is just carrying over the additional loan proceeds that are available to us to complete out that project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Counselors, next up, item six, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless the council still requests, in which case, item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda. Counselor Forstman?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Counselor Forstman, second by Counselor Schroder to approve the consent agenda. Is there discussion? Clerk Craven-Craw?
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Cleaver?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Next up is item seven, action item. Item A, licenses, considering approval of the following renewal licenses. And we have someone to present a staff report. There we go. I see a couple of faces turning. Ralph Anderson, if you please state your name for the record, speak loudly and clearly into the microphones so we can hear you. Welcome.
Hobbie Anderson with Community Development.
The floor is yours. Thank you.
All right, sorry.
Well, let's see if there's any questions. Before you get away, we don't see you very often. Counselors, any questions? Do we understand what we're here for? Okay. Well, thank you. Counselor Schroder?
I motion?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve a renewal license for liquor, retail liquor, retail wine by the drink and bottle, and retail beer on and off premise for the 21 businesses listed below on the agenda. Second.
Then moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forstman to approve the renewal licenses for retail liquor, retail wine by the drink and bottle, and retail beer on and off premises for the 21 businesses listed below on the agenda. Is there discussion?
I'll make a follow-up motion.
All right, we sure motion, Schroder. Counselor, so we need to vote on that one.
Oh, we didn't, did we?
We, you made a motion to approve.
Okay. I'll wait.
Okay, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. We now move to agenda, or second, there we go, I'll turn the page over. Counselor Schroder?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the renewal license for retail liquor, retail wine by the drink and bottle, and retail beer on and off premise as applicable for the Elks Club, the Elks Lodge, excuse me, Lewiston Golf and Country Club, and Red Lobster subject to submittal of the required paperwork.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Cleaver to approve the renewal licenses for retail liquor, retail wine by the drink and bottle, and retail beer on and off premises premises as applicable for the Elks Lodge, Lewiston Golf and Country Club, and Red Lobster subject to submittal of the required paperwork. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Forstman?
I do have actually a question. What does off premises entail?
There we go. Thank you.
I never saw that until now, sorry.
Off premises generally grocery stores, gas stations.
Oh.
And in some cases, with the bars, it would be like kegs or growlers.
Oh, I see. So, if they went to like events and stuff kind of thing? Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Thank you, Mayor. I might have been asked the same question, I couldn't quite understand. Is there a timeframe when they're, that they're allowed to submit this paperwork?
Would you please introduce yourself again for the record? We want to make sure people at home are understanding.
Hobbie Anderson with Community Development, sorry. Generally, it's with these, it's to meet the agenda to be, I'm sorry, to be presented to you, so before the expiration date, and then make the cutoff time to meet the agenda to be presented to you. That would generally be the cutoff time.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
So, I didn't quite follow that, but, I mean, is there a deadline, that if they don't get it submitted by a certain deadline, then it's, they lose it?
Yeah, the 31st of January.
Thirty, you said 31st of January. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Other questions? Hey, counselors, we have a motion by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Cleaver. If there's no further discussion, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Next up, item B, ordinances, first reading, 1A, ordinance 4870, repealing and reserving section 8, 9 of the Lewiston City Code regarding animal cruelty, amending section 11 to remove unnecessary definitions, amending section 833 to remove provisions regarding cruelty of dogs, and amending section 843B to remove a reference to section 8-9. This is an action item. We have one of our staff attorneys with us here, Bree Drury. If you'd please introduce yourself for the record, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Bree Ann Drury, Assistant City Attorney. Today, I'm here to present to you ordinance number 4870. This ordinance essentially takes out animal cruelty from the Lewiston City Code, which is currently under section 8-9. I want to highlight that the fact that we are taking it out does not mean that animal cruelty is no longer a crime here. It is covered by Idaho Code, section 25-3504. Our current section is very duplicative of Idaho Code, and the best practice is to remove the city code violation and just follow state code. Also, Idaho Code gives law enforcement the authority to impound an animal through the disposition of the criminal case, whereas in city code, we don't have that ability to hold the dog or animal throughout the whole, until the disposition of the criminal So, this means that the, any animal cruelty case will be handled by the Nez Perce County Prosecutor's Office. Our office has spoken with Justin Coleman, who is the elected prosecutor, and he was fine with this change. He understood, and it, there aren't a ton of animal cruelty cases that come out of the city of Lewiston, which is a good thing every year, so it will not significantly decrease our caseload, nor significantly increase their caseload. And it's the, it will still be a misdemeanor. It is a misdemeanor under Idaho Code. And then, so that's with section 8-9. And then, there's just some housekeeping items that go along with that. Under section 8-11, there are some definitions that are no longer necessary due to us taking out 8-9. I believe it's, I think it defines torture, cruelty, and torment. Those are nowhere else in chapter eight of Lewiston City Code, so it's not really necessary to have those in there if we do take out 8-9. And then, also in 8-33, just removing some provisions that are specific to the cruelty of dogs. And also in section 8-43B, removing a reference to 8-9. We don't want to reference something that is not there. So, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Bree. Counselor Forstman?
Yeah, so a couple of, I've noticed this with some of our ordinances that we have pertaining to state code and then city ordinance. Do you know of any history behind that, why the redundancy? Like, for this code, we have, obviously, it's not necessary because it's already in state code. Is there a reason behind, in the past, why we've had so much redundancy with city code?
So, I mean, the way that we do ordinances, we can alter the city code, the state can also do that. So, I don't know exactly when they altered their animal cruelty code, but I know that it has been since we have last updated this provision.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Of course.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering, too, here in this, in the commentary, it looked like Captain Paul mentioned a, the city code 8-39, but I didn't see it marked out or changed in your, the references in the back.
Are you talking about the redemption, the impounding of dogs?
Yeah, the six-day deal.
Yeah, so, that was the original issue with the animal cruelty is, you know, if somebody's being cruel to their animals, we can only take it for six days under city code. I believe that that statute would still, is still applicable to other times that they would need to impound dogs or quarantine a dog. And I think with, for example, I, and Kayla can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe with vicious dogs, they can be quarantined, if that's correct? Or maybe I just misspoke.
That's okay, we're going to get an answer.
Kayla Herman, City Attorney. I'm not completely sure on the vicious dog piece, but like Bree explained, there are other instances where LPD might need to impound a dog, and by leaving that provision in there, it still gives them the authority to do that for those situations. We can certainly go back and take a closer look, just to double-check, to make sure there aren't any issues, but I think we already checked that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Towesley?
Yeah, I just make a comment. I appreciate that this is being looked at, and I, I see a lot of situations all through the country and sometimes here where you have animals that have been treated badly, and I like the idea that after six days, the person who treated them badly can't retrieve them. I like that. I think that's a necessary addition, so I would certainly support this. So I would certainly support this.
And Mayor, if I may speak, Council Spickelmeier. If a, so for example, if a dog's at large and they can't find the owner, then they have nowhere else to take the dog, so they can impound it. But the owner would still be able to come and obtain their animal within that period of time, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Bree, you have a very nice voice for speaking in public because you are clear and you project. Thank you. Counselors, I would entertain a motion. If you have no more questions for Ms. Drury.
I'll make a motion.
Counselor Schroeder?
Okay, I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4870.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Towesley to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4870. Is there discussion or amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk Ravencroft?
Counselor Towesley?
Read the title, clerk.
Oh, I got ahead of myself. Approving the, I better even, I'm not even in the right location. I don't know why. Approving the first reading of ordinance 4870. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston repealing and reserving Section 8-9 of the Lewiston City Code regarding animal cruelty. Amending Section 8-11 to remove unnecessary definitions. Amending Section 8-33 to remove provisions regarding cruelty of dogs. Amending Section 8-43B to remove a reference to Section 8-9, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Clerk Ravencroft. Counselors, next up, second and third readings. Item 2A under B. Ordinance 4862, amending sections 37-93, 37-93D, 37-93E, 37-93F, and 37-93G of the Lewiston City Code related to the Form and Impact Based Zone. This is an action item. We have staff here if you have questions. Otherwise, counselors, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Counselor Schroeder?
I move to combine the, no, did I jump? No, I'm on the right one, aren't I? Move to combine the second and third readings and to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4862.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Kleberg to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4862. A discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Schroeder?
Thank you. I move to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4862.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Towesley to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4862. Is there discussion? Amendments, counselors, if any? If not, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Ravencroft?
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance 4862. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston amending sections 3793, 3793D, 3793E, 3793F, and 3793G of the Lewiston City Code related to the Form and Impact Based Zone.
Thank you. Next up, counselors, we have active agenda item 7B2B. Ordinance number 4869, implementing the city council's decision in ZNC 22-000007, declaring that certain real property be removed from the general commercial C4 zone and included in the central commercial C5 zone. This is an action item.
Mayor, a motion?
Counselor Forstman?
I make a motion to combine the second and third reading and waive the third reading in full ordinance of number 4869.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Forstman, second by Counselor Towesley to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4869. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Counselor Forstman?
Motion to approve the second and third readings of ordinance 4869.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Forstman, second by Counselor Towesley to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4869. Is there discussion? Amendments? Mayor? Counselor Kleberg?
Yes, we got a typo in there. It says approve second and third readings or ordinance 4869.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion, I'll restate the motion to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4869. Thank you. There's no discussion. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Clerk Ravencroft?
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance 4869. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston implementing the city council's decision in ZNC 22-000007, declaring that certain real property be removed from the general commercial C4 zone and included in the central commercial C5 zone. Amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Counselors, next up, we have Roman numeral 7, active agenda C. Item C, recent statement, ZNC 22-000007, considering approving the recent statement for ZNC 22-000007, city of Lewiston. This is an action item.
Mayor?
Counselor Forstman?
Mayor?
I'm sorry, who did I miss?
Kayla Herman, City Attorney. It looks like you skipped adoption and approval of ordinance summaries.
Did I do that? Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I suppose. All right. All right, counselors. Let's go to number three, adoption and approval of ordinance summary. Item A, ordinance 4862, and item B, ordinance 4869.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Towesley?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance from 4862 and 4869 and to approve the related ordinance summaries.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Towesley, second by Counselor Kleberg to adopt ordinance numbers 4862 and 4869 and approve the related ordinance summaries. Is there discussion? If not, Clerk Ravencroft, please.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, counselors. Thank you, Kayla. Roman numeral 7, active agenda, item C, recent statement, ZNC 22-000007, considering approving the recent statement for ZNC 22-000007, city of Lewiston. This is an action item.
Mayor, a motion?
Counselor Forstman?
Motion to approve recent statement for ZNC 22-000007.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Forstman, second by Counselor Kleberg to approve the recent statement for ZNC 22-000007. Counselors, is there discussion on this? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Next up, under active agenda, item 7D, PFAS Cost Recovery Program, considering whether to register with the National Rural Water Association. PFAS, Polyfluoral Alkaline Substance Cost Recovery Program. This is an action item. And, counselors, I think I'm gonna take a privilege here and call on our city attorney, Ms. Jennifer, if she would please, she's gonna take the stand and maybe just very briefly explain this item to us. Jennifer Walkman, if you'd please introduce yourself for the record. Remember, speak up loudly and clearly into the microphone. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jennifer Tangano, Assistant City Attorney. This particular program is a part of the PFAS Cost Recovery Program that the Idaho Rural Water Association has recommended that all jurisdictions within its purview register with the National Rural Water Association's PFAS Cost Recovery Program. The purpose of the program is to provide the ability to receive settlement funds in the event a favorable settlement is received as a part of a national lawsuit. This particular lawsuit is akin to the opioid program in which it's a multi-district litigation. And that they are in the course of settlement discussions and determining whether or not this matter will go to trial. Those areas that are a part of the Idaho Rural Waters Association that are most likely to be affected by this is anywhere that has a military installation, an airport, anywhere that has used firefighting foam or that has any kind of firefighting training center are most likely to have PFAS contamination. In discussions with Brian Lacy, the city has not yet tested positive at the water treatment plant for PFAS contamination. However, the city has yet to test its groundwater. More recently, the EPA is going through its fifth round of testing, or rule modifications which will heighten or more restrict the ability of PFAS contaminants in drinking water. The city has yet to determine or find out what those limits are. But the EPA is going to be releasing that information in the next couple of weeks or months. The DEQ is also creating a program that will provide free testing for jurisdictions in Idaho. But this particular program, from what I've been able to gather, is a free program for us to register that will allow us to receive funds for cost recovery, testing, and remediation. There will likely be limits on what the funds will be able to be used for. However, that information is not yet determined because of the fact that they're in the pre-settlement phase. So by registering with this particular program, it's free. From what I have been able to determine, there's no negative effects. I have reached out to the Idaho Municipal Lawyers List serve and seen if other jurisdictions have registered, but no one got back to me. So from what I've seen with other states' Rural Water Association flyers and information, there's no negatives at this time for our participation. I'm available for questions if anyone has any.
Jennifer, just briefly, why now?
Why now? Right now, that there is a January 31st deadline, most likely as a result of a combination of the EPA's soon-to-be-made rulemaking on contamination levels. And also, they're getting ready for settlement discussions between the parties in this multi-district litigation. So they're trying to figure out, from my estimate, how many different entities are going to be a part of this. The sooner that we register, the most likely that we are to receive some kind of funding. If we register too late, we might not get as much funding. Or we might miss the opportunity for funding if they settle before we're able to join the program.
Counselors? Counselor Spickelmeier?
Thank you, Mayor. In some of the information that we received, it had a law firm listed down towards the bottom. Is that the law firm that is leading the lawsuit on this?
That is the law firm that's been retained by the National Rural Water Association. And so they are kind of leading it as far as the National and Idaho Rural Waters Association. This particular lawsuit involves a lot of different jurisdictions, municipalities, local governments, private entities, and private corporations. So there's a lot of different law firms involved. But this particular law firm is specific to the Rural Water Associations, which Lewiston is a member of.
Thank you. Counselor Kleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is the one that kind of stuck out with me. It's, time is the essence. The EPA recently set health advisory levels for PFAS as low as four parts per quadrillion. That's a minute amount. I don't know, you know, if this doesn't cost us anything and we somehow magically find some of this in our water, I guess I would certainly support this.
Thank you, Counselor. Other comments? Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselors, I entertain a motion or not? Counselor Schroeder?
I move to register the city of Lewiston's water utility with the National Rural Water Association PFAS Cost Recovery Program and authorize the mayor or public works staff to complete the necessary paperwork.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Forstman to register the city of Lewiston's water utility with the National Rural Water Association PFAS Cost Recovery Program and authorize the mayor or public works staff to complete the necessary paperwork. Is there further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Next up, we have item E, Resolution 2023-8, considering consent to the continuance of the declaration of local disaster emergency beyond seven days of its inception, if necessary, in accordance with Idaho Code 46-1011. Counselors, I don't know if I can answer any questions you might have. If you have any, I can try to provide some feedback. Otherwise, I'll call upon our city attorney, Kayla Herman, to help us out. Counselor Spickelmeier?
I didn't see it in here. They state how many days this extension? Is it seven more days?
Well, I'm gonna take a stab at it. But I think it just, it cannot go beyond seven days without your authority. And it stays in effect until it's canceled.
Well, once, if the council approved it, it would stay, okay. Got you.
Or seven more days, or now it's?
Indefinitely. Kayla?
Kayla Herman, City Attorney. So currently, the statute states that the mayor has the authority to declare a local disaster emergency, which he did on January 18th. And then the statute goes on to say that if it is anticipated that that's going to need to extend beyond seven days, which seven days would be this coming Wednesday, that it cannot continue or be renewed without consent from council. So what this resolution does is it gives councils consent for the mayor's initial declaration to continue, if necessary, beyond that seven-day period. And then, under that same statute, the mayor would also have the authority to terminate, at which time the disaster, the local disaster emergency was no longer needed.
Thank you, Kayla. So maybe just let me restate my answer. Indefinite is not the correct response. It's, it's in effect until the response and recovery aspects have been terminated. So that would include any of the applicable, you know, disaster emergency plans that we're working through and any funding mechanisms, these kind of things. and any funding mechanisms, these kind of things. But it would stay in place until that disaster and every-- all the activities were terminated along with that, so. Councillor Towesley?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty-two-three dash eight.
Second.
It's been moved by Councillor Towesley, seconded by Councillor Forssman, to approve Resolution Twenty-two-three dash eight. Is there further discussion? Councillor Kleberg?
Yeah, thank you. So I guess by definition, we're just-- everybody knows we had a disaster, but the emergency part, is that just strictly dealing with the boil water order? Or is that when we figured out a new reservoir?
Councillor, we have filed a local disaster emergency declaration, and that was forwarded to our partners at the county, and they likewise have declared an emergency and also determined that they are not able to provide resources to us to help us in this disaster. So that goes from the county level up to the state level, and my understanding is that it's pending with the Idaho Office of Emergency Management, and that's where it sits until we make a formal request. In other words, we have to give them something to show them what it is we're claiming, and we have not done that yet, is my understanding. I'm gonna keep looking out at the crowd, especially Director Johnson, but as far as I know, we're still taking inventory and assessing the situation. So once we get a better handle on that, then I think we're able to make the ask of the IOM, and they will have to decide whether or not this qualifies for protocols for disaster where we may potentially be eligible for reimbursement or other assistance in this process.
I've got no problem with it, just--
Councillor Schroeder?
I move to approve Resolution--
Oh, we have a motion.
Oh, did we already do that? Okay, sorry. I was listening to all of the-- until you gave us, so that's right, we did.
I apologize. If there's no further discussion, Clerk Ravencroft?
Councillor Towesley?
Aye.
Councillor Forssman?
Aye.
Aye.
Councillor Kleberg?
Aye.
Councillor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, councillors. Next, we move to Roman numeral nine, unfinished and new business. Item A, city councillor comments. Comments shall not be related to an action item currently before the city council or an item that may come before the city council in the foreseeable future and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Councillor Towesley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Public Works and all the work that you're doing. It's-- sometimes you have a show that you have to show up to that you didn't make and you don't like, because you have to deal with it, and I appreciate all of the people that are involved with making this as palatable as possible for the citizens. And I feel bad for people that are still on-- that are still in the boil water areas, and I hope that that will be taken care of in the near future. But I commend Director Johnson and all the work that he and his staff have been doing to try to make this a better thing. And on the lighter side, if you haven't been to the Civic Theater's production of the complete works of William Shakespeare, "Abraged," out at Lindsay Creek, we-- one of the things about our society now is that we have the ability to sit in front of a flat screen and watch a hundred-and-fifty thousand things from all over the world at any moment, but you don't get to see live theater very often, and this is superb live theater. Three people in a cast who are going ninety miles a minute, and it is extremely entertaining and fun. And the only thing I wish is that William Shakespeare hasn't been reduced to being a joke, because it really is tremendous stuff. But if this is your opportunity to get a sense of it, you're gonna love it. And if you know Shakespeare, you're gonna love it, too. So I hope people will make an opportunity to try to go do that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Forssman?
Same for Public Works. Thank you for all your hard work. I know that's probably not what you wanted to wake up to, and nor the citizens of Lewiston that are dealing with this. I know the hospital had to deal with this and not taking any emergencies and moving them on. So everybody's affected that lives down there. But we're seeing Pub Parks and Rec have that water down there. It's amazing that we were able to give water bottles for people and clean water as much as we can. And even on Facebook, seeing the community offer people to come to their house and use their tubs. Hey, I have clean water if you need to clean your kids. Ours has been lifted. So just the community coming together in this is amazing to see. As horrible as this has is, and no one wanted this to happen, and nor were we trying to make it happen. But it is great to see Public Works and Lewiston community come together and help each other out in times of need, which is why I ran for city council, because I'm just so proud of how, in times of need, our community steps up. So thank you again for all your hard work and your team's hard work, and hopefully we can put this behind us and learn from it and not have it happen again. But we're definitely learning from it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of things. One, I was coming back into town Saturday afternoon, and I noticed all the volunteers at the locomotive park taking down the lights. I just wanted to thank all the volunteers and the sponsors that did that. I was amazed at how many people were out there working on that. And also, I wanted to do a shout-out to Director Parker and the community center. I went with my mother to the senior nutrition lunch last week, and it was very nice. It's a very nice program.
Thank you, councillor. It's nice when we can recognize our staff. We appreciate that very much. Councillor Kleberg?
Yeah, just to piggyback on everybody else, thanks, Justin, and your crew for dealing with a totally unanticipated and major event. I don't, you know, I've been here since nineteen eighty-five. I don't think we ever had anything remotely close to what we just witnessed, so. And again, you know, I know the city staff will be working through this and just what Dodd said earlier. You know, I think we'll try and do our best to make everybody whole so that they're happy in their homes as best we can, as soon as we can.
City Board and Commission updates? Mayor comments? Well, I certainly have had an opportunity to spend time with Director Johnson and his Incident Command staff, and they've done a tremendous job. I can tell you that firsthand. And it was just very exciting to see the team come together and work so smoothly and so efficiently. And I think some of that was probably a direct result of some Incident Command training we've been doing for the past couple of months with our chief Michael Bus. He was leading us in that. And so, you know, it gave us an opportunity to put that practice-- that training into practice. And so that was really fun to watch and learn, and it prepares us, too, for any future event that we may have happen. So there's been a lot of long hours put in by everyone. So we just appreciate staff's effort to do that. Maybe just to repeat, I know that this has been shared in some of our press releases that have gone out, but, you know, our first priority was to protect life safety and the safety of our men and women that are out there working, our first responders, and then stabilizing the event and then protecting property and critical infrastructure, these kind of things. So it's been a very coordinated, very professional effort at all levels. So I, too, want to share my thank you with staff for that. But also, I have an announcement here that I want to share, just kind of a plug for our Community Development Block Grand folks who have all left. But we're short public members. We need some folks to show up at our CDBG meetings. The next one is a virtual meeting, online Zoom meeting, January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, at six P.M., and then the in-person meeting, which is Monday, January thirtieth, Community Development Department Bell Building, second floor, at six P.M. at night. But we need to hear from our community partners. This is a very important program. We do a lot of work in CDBG, but across different program areas, including our efforts as a city to work on affordable housing and homeless issues and these kind of things. So it's very important that we hear from our members of the public. So please, if you're listening, consider joining us at one of those two events. I would also like to share a comment here. If there are folks listening at home or in the audience here that would like to stay in the know with the City of Lewiston about our current emergency situation, there are several ways you can do that. The first one is to call two-zero-eight-nine-eight-four-seven-zero-four-eight, and that's the number that's staffed by City of Lewiston employees, where we can talk to you about any concerns you may have with the event. We can record those concerns. We also have on our City of Lewiston website-- in fact, it's on the screen up there. You can see that there's an updated boil water order. You'll see that in future emergency alert notifications. There's a ribbon at the top of our website, and it'll give you some important information. Also, we have some other ways of communicating. If you use those types of platforms, Instagram and Facebook, where you can reach information. And our Public Information Officer, Carol Mauer, does a great job of getting that information out. So if you have questions, please get ahold of us. Councillors, next up, we have Item D, Advisory Board and Commission Appointments. This is an action item. First one is considering the reappointment of Brian Hensley to the Cemetery Urban Forestry Advisory Commission. You have information in your packet. I would move to reappoint Brian Hensley to the Cemetery Urban Forestry Advisory Commission.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Johnson, seconded by Councillor Kleberg, to reappoint Brian Hensley to the Cemetery Urban Forestry Advisory Commission. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, councillors. Next up, considering the reappointment of David Chenault to the Emergency Services Advisory Board. I move to reappoint David Chenault to the Emergency Services Advisory Board.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Johnson, seconded by Councillor Schroeder, to reappoint Dave Chenault to the Emergency Services Advisory Board. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, councillors. This next appointment is for a term of four years. Just point that out to you. It's considering the appointment of Tim Switzer to the Urban Renewal Agency.
Second.
I move to appoint Tim Switzer to the Urban Renewal Agency for a term of four years. It's been seconded by Councillor Forssman. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, councillors. Last item here, under Item nine E, Agenda Topics. Councillors, do you have any agenda topics to add? Okay, I'm gonna move down to Roman numeral ten, Adjournment. Been moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councillor Kleberg, seconded by Councillor Schroeder to adjourn. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.